Alright, hey guys. So for today, we are gonna learn projectile motion. Now, what's exactly projectile motion? Okay, projectile motion is usually a movement of a particular object from the ground, go up, back to the ground, or any motion. Let's say this is the ground, right? Okay, make sure you guys, okay, shape to show that this is the ground. That is number one. Or secondly, projectile motion also can be something or any movement which is curved, by which I mean, okay, you guys dah belajar kan? Anything which has angle. The moment there's a particular angle, that is definitely projectile motion. The keyword over here is angle. Okay, these two are the types of projectile motion. Now, let's have a look at... Let me just open a new board. Yes, okay. Alright, now let's have a look at a projectile motion. Let's say this is the movement of a particular object. Tak kisah lah bola ke apa ke, okay whatsoever. Alright, dulu kita pernah bincang. The moment ada angle, ada x and y component. Okay, itu benda pertama yang paling penting you guys need to know. Number two, ada stufa. For this chapter semua benda is stufa. You guys have to know s displacement, t time u initial velocity, v final velocity, and a acceleration. Okay, projectile motion is basically the combination of one and two. Setiap kali calculate initial velocity, final velocity, acceleration and so on, ada x component and y component yang tersendiri the moment you see the picture or the movement of an object at a particular angle. Okay, that is number one. Number two, time. Time untuk x dengan y component always the same. Kenapa? Sebab takkanlah objek tu dah bergerak depan in the x component, y component masih di belakang, tak logic kan? Definitely, let's say we are talking about a ball moving forward. Yes, x component dia kalau you letak dekat Cartesian plane yang you belajar dalam maths. Sini kosong, sini dua. Now we are talking about projectile motion, right? It's moving upwards like this and then go there. Which means ada juga movement y component. That means the time of x and y component is just the same. It's like you telling me a pendulum is moving, you gonna one stopwatch. Time is moving, right? Can you buy time and say satu ke depan satu ke belakang? No, it's always moving forward. That's why time for the x and y component is the same. Now, u initial velocity and final velocity. We are gonna have a look at it very shortly. Acceleration, okay. Acceleration untuk y component. Untuk acceleration y component adalah macam ni kan? Y component is anything which is vertical. Vertical untuk fizik in this chapter, acceleration for y component is negative nine point eight one meter per second square. Why? This is, kalau korang ingat, this is tarikan gravity. The moment an object leaves the ground, apa-apa lepas tu, the one influencing di particular object untuk jatuh balik kepada sesuatu position atau the final product. In the y component, it's always influenced by the gravity. Acceleration gravity. Or we can call this a g, gravitational acceleration. It's a capital, sorry, a small a and a lower case g over here. A g value is negative nine point eight one meter per second square. Now, negative amat-amat penting. Why? Gravitational acceleration always downwards. Logic, dalam dunia, gravity ke mana? Ke bawah kan? That's why it's negative nine point eight one. Alright, that is for y component acceleration. Okay now, before we move on and further details, let's have a look at the movement. Okay, let's say an object is over here. Okay, now the object is in blue colour, okay? The object is over here, everything is definitely zero. But you can calculate the initial velocity. Kenapa? You have an angle here. Angle over here is called tira. Or whatever angle, it can be thirty degrees, forty degrees and so on. Okay, ini apa? Nama ini adalah, over here is u initial velocity. Your initial velocity nak cari initial velocity, kenapa? Resolve, kenapa? Initial velocity atau velocity is a vector quantity. So you gotta do u x and u y. Paling senang, extract gambar ni. U x, u y. This is thirty degrees. Nak cari untuk u. Selalunya value untuk u diberi. But you have to find u x and u y. Because lepas ni, we will learn table of stufa for x and y component. Kenapa? Dekat mula-mula sekarang, in this session I've explained to you, projectile motion is both angle in x and y component and stufa. Sini dia bagi u. You still have to resolve and find the value of x and y component. Kenapa? The rule is angle x and y component with stufa. So satu persatu, alright? I'm just trying to explain to you how does projectile motion works first. Okay, now the ball moves up and so on. Okay, let's say the ball is here. When the ball is here, component x masih ke kanan, okay? Component x masih ke kanan. Component y, yes, atas tapi angle dia berbeza. Component x, it's everything from the beginning until the end will be the same. For y, the component, yes, ke atas juga, okay? The only thing difference here or the only thing differs from movement number one and movement number two is the angle. Remember, angle sahaja akan effect. Every time you calculate, let's say you letak sine forty five degrees and sine seventy degrees. Definitely there's difference, right? In the value, that's what I'm trying to say over here. Okay now. Next, kalau dekat atas sini, dekat atas sini, x component ada. Y component, y component ada ke tak? Okay, over here when it's at maximum height, this thing is called maximum height. Atau we denote it as h, okay? H, the moment dalam soalan ada h, it means that object is at maximum height. When the moment the object is at maximum height, the component of velocity, listen properly, the component of velocity of y axis is zero. Kenapa ada x je? Why tiada angle apa-apa, alright? So y over here, velocity of y will be zero. Don't worry, lepas ni we'll look at the table of stufa. This one, I'm just trying to explain how does the movement works. Next, let's say the object is here, same thing. Your x is still towards the right, your y ke bawah, kenapa? Movement of the object is downwards. Okay, ini tadi naik, ini turun. But angle over here, the angle will still be, sorry, the angle will be this, okay? Alright, next, jangan risau angle or we'll go through questions, okay? At the end here, when the object lands, same thing over here, tapi the only difference is that one is initial, ini will be your final, okay? Jangan lupa walaupun di bawah, the line continues ta. The line for the angle continues and angle is here. Kenapa? Dulu dah belajar resolution, sorry, resolve vectors kan? Theta will always be towards x axis. Remember, theta always towards x axis. Jadi angle dia dekat sini, alright? Okay, this one will be your final, alright? Now, we are gonna review this again. Yang ini adalah maximum height, which we denote as h. Okay, ada lagi satu yang ini, which is from the initial to the final projectile motion. That is called range atau R, capital R, okay? Now, this is the basic stuff. This is basically, I'm explaining to you how the things move. Now, let's have a look at a stufa table. Let's create a stufa table. What do I mean by stufa table? The moment you see a question relating projectile motion, okay? You have to create a stable. Satu untuk x component, satu untuk y component. Bila ada angle tau, okay? Right, stufa. Okay now, let's try to fill in stufa. Okay, yang ini displacement. Number one is displacement. Displacement untuk x. X is what? Mendarar macam ni kan? Tadi kita tengok dah kan? Adalah range, okay? Range adalah from the initial sampai terakhir sekali, okay? Itu boleh jadi case pertama. Case kedua adalah s x. Maksudnya dia punya objek start here, tapi maybe landing dekat separuni. Dia suruh calculate dekat sini je, dia tak suruh calculate at the end. Kalau dia suruh calculate at the end baru letak R. Kalau dia suruh calculate sebelum objek tu lands or something else, dia dinamakan s x. Now, y component untuk displacement. Number one, h, maximum height. Kalau dekat sini baru h capital. Kalau dekat sini, the object is here, that is not maximum height, right? We call it case number two s y, alright? Okay, displacement perlu betul-betul tau. Now, time, jangan risau, both sama. X component, y component, the same thing. Now, x component untuk velocity. Initial velocity untuk x component adalah u x. Selalunya guna cos theta. Kenapa? Kita dah belajar sebelum ni, kalau angle dekat sini, u x nak cari kat sini kan, u x? So it will be u x cos theta. Kalau nak cari u y, it will be u y sine theta. Alright, trigonometry rule, okay? Now, that's why I said, walaupun dia bagi value of u, you still have to resolve again. Kenapa nak cari x component, y component? Alright, u x cos theta. Next, untuk y component, same thing, u y sine theta. Okay, now, what is the final velocity of the x component? The final velocity of the x component will be the same as the initial velocity of the x component. So senang cerita, u x equals to v x. Now, kenapa pula u x equals to v x? If you realise here, do you realise tak? Belah sini kan, u x is just the same. Kanan, everything is towards the right. It's basically you telling me the whole movement is towards the right. So no matter berapa times you resolve pun, u x equals to v x. Kenapa? I have shown you in this particular movement, alright? Next, you can also do v x cos theta, no worries, okay? Now, v y, v y atau final velocity you always kena cari. Selalunya kena cari, because you don't know. V y selalunya, let's say dia nak, soalan dia nak, it's purple colour, okay? Soalan dia nak dekat sini. Dekat sini maksudnya initial masih sama, final berbeza. Untuk y component, jadi you have to recalculate. That's why v y is always the thing that you need to find. Selalunya memang macam tu. Alright, next, acceleration. Tadi y component acceleration is negative nine point eight one meter per second square. Untuk semua case sama, alright? Don't worry about that. X component, okay. Apa itu acceleration? Acceleration adalah v minus u over time. Final velocity minus initial velocity over time. Jadi, I already explained to you, final velocity of x component dengan initial velocity of x component is the same, kan? Final minus initial bagi apa-apa pun. Sebab let's say sini tujuh, sini pun tujuh, tujuh telat tujuh, kosong kan? Bagi apa-apa pun akan jadi kosong meter per second square. Okay, this is the stufa table that you need to know. Semua soalan guna benda sama. This is the exact table you need to know, alright? Don't worry about value yang ini, value yang ini, value of time, and yeah, this three jangan risau apa-apa. Selalunya, these are the things that will never change, okay? Alright now, what table ni, ada markah juga tau? That's why I said, instead of writing one by one, you just do this table, x, y component, settle it out, you'll get your max. Okay, guys, any questions before we move on to an example?
No.
Alright, okay. Now, let's have a look at an example, okay? Over here, we are talking about a tennis ball. A tennis ball, okay? Fizik mula chapter dua, everything is situation based. A tennis ball is thrown upward from the top of a building, okay? Maksudnya, pergerakan dia, yes, mula daripada a place and ending to somewhere else. Tapi dia tak mula dari ground, kenapa? Dia mula from the top of a building, which means you have to draw a building over here. Best way is to draw, okay? You not throw a tennis ball from here, okay? With a velocity of fifteen meter per second at an angle thirty degrees to the horizontal. Maksudnya, you baling bola tu dengan fifteen meter per second velocity dia. Itu adalah your initial velocity kan? Yes, definitely. Sebab you baling daripada, from. So that will be your u. U equals to fifteen meter per second. Ini adalah u, bukan u x, bukan u y. Automatically do your own trigon over here. U x, u y, alright? At an angle thirty degrees to the horizontal. Apa maksudnya? Thirty degrees from u to horizontal. Horizontal adalah x. Jadi sini adalah your angle. This angle is thirty degrees. Kalau dia cakap to the vertical, kalau to the vertical, it means, sini you kan, this will be your angle. Ini adalah vertical. Tadi horizontal, okay? The height of the building is forty meters. Maksudnya dia dah ada ke atas forty meters. Calculate the maximum height. Tadi we know maximum height to a capital H, right? And capital H, if you realise over here, it's in your y component. See, if you know this table, it will be, it will make your life much easier. Now, as usual, create a stufa table. Okay, let's create a stufa table. X, y, s t u v a, alright, stufa. S untuk x component. Do you know the x for, sorry, the displacement of the x component? No, you don't. Kenapa? Dia tak cakap pun berapa jauh dia, the ball travels. Mendarar, no. They are not talking about that, they have never stated anything about. The only thing they said is the height of the building is forty meter. Itupun, itupun y component punya, sebab height. Height is definitely y component. So just leave it as s x. Jangan risau kalau tiada data tau, no worries at all, okay? Now, y component untuk displacement. What is s y for displacement? Okay, over here, if you see properly, s y untuk sekarang kita nak cari apa? H kan? Basically the height. Basically kalau dari sini sampai maximum height sini, h. Sebab baru dia akan jatuh bola tu kan? Dia akan jatuh balik ke ground. Dia don't mind my crooked lines ke. So basically they want height over here. If you realise, the movement dekat sini bola tu, dia pergi maximum height. Tapi it's, we are only calculating sini je. Maksudnya, we are only calculating the movement from here to the maximum height. Lepas tu turun balik, walaupun dia turun dekat daftar atau turun dekat ground yang kosong meter tu. But because we are taking from here, ending dia dekat sini. That is our calculation. Sebab itu initially I have told you projectile motion is whatever we calculate. Okay, now, situasi dia macam ni. Unless you go and take from here, then you will get maximum height. Pergi atas, lepas tu datang balik bawah kepada tempat sama. Unfortunately, you cannot do that. Kenapa? Dia dah bagi initial velocity dekat sini. So you can't simply be assuming walaupun dia dekat sini fifteen meter per second. No, you have to follow the question, alright? Make that very clear. Maximum height, yes, tapi not the maximum height of the whole movement. The maximum height from the building, top of the building, pergi atas, reach maximum dulu, turun sampai dekat top of the building punya height. Not to the ground straight away, okay? Itu je kita calculate, okay now? That is h. Time, do you know the time? I don't think so, so you just put t, t, alright? Now, initial velocity of x, can you find it? Yes, u x cos theta. Kalau nak senang, just put u cos theta. U dah diberi, fifteen. Cos theta apa? Theta adalah thirty degrees. So you put that in a calculator, you will get thirteen point zero meter per second, okay? That is for x component. Y component macam mana? Ni x component tau, alright? Y component macam mana? Same thing, u sine theta. You will get fifteen sine thirty degrees. You will be getting seven point five zero meter per second, okay? Now, untuk u cos theta atau u x, u dah settle. So you just put in the value. Put thirteen over here, here will be seven point five point zero meter per second. Don't forget you need meter per second, alright? Now, final velocity. Final velocity untuk v x. Basically x punya component. Do you know the final velocity of the x component? I think you guys know quite well, right? Because initial velocity dengan final velocity is the same. Sebab kita calculate sampai sini je. So you guys can safely assume it's still thirteen meter per second. Okay, not square, okay? Thirteen meter per second je. Now, velocity of y, okay? Awal tadi I dah cerita, kalau benda tu dekat atas, velocity of y jadi apa? It becomes, have a look at this. Kalau dekat atas sini, velocity of y jadi apa? Velocity of y becomes zero. So same concept here, you just apply it again. V y will be zero meter per second. Ingat, maximum height, velocity of y component kosong, alright? Now, acceleration. Acceleration untuk x component kosong. Why? Sebab initial velocity x component dengan final velocity x component adalah sama. Next, acceleration untuk y component. We know this very well, negative nine point eight one meter per second square. Okay, sekarang apa dia nak cari? Dia nak cari maximum height of the ball from the ground. Maksudnya dari daftar sini, dari dasar dia, okay? Okay, kalau you calculate sini, what will you get? You will get the height of the ball, the maximum height of the ball from the top of the building. Jadi, just get the answer and tambahlah empat puluh meter yang diberi. You will get the maximum height of the ball from the ground, okay? Alright now, macam mana nak buat? Okay, untuk ni dia special case. You don't need to resolve anything. You just see belakiri belakangan mana satu lebih banyak info? Belakangan kan? Okay, one, two, three you have. You need to find h. Jadi, h tu apa? S. Okay, formula apa yang you boleh guna? V equals to u plus eighty. We got v equals to u, got a, got t. Yes, you boleh guna, tapi you bukan nak cari time, you nak cari displacement, okay? Next, v square equals to u square plus two a s. V square ada, u square ada, a ada. S kena cari, yes, just use the formula. V square equals to u square plus two a s. Component by component tau. Unless dia suruh cari resolving vector, okay? Okay now, v square plus equals to u square plus two a s. V square u kosong, square. U square adalah seven point five square plus two. Acceleration negative nine point eight one, s is s x. Sorry, s y. You will get an answer of two point eight seven meter, okay? Sekarang, if you tak percaya me about the maximum height of the ball from the ground? Two point lapan tujuh meter. Adakah itu maximum height of the ball from the ground? Do you think so? It's quite logic, it's not. Kenapa? Sebab height of the building dah empat puluh meter. Takkan you baling daripada empat puluh meter top of the building. Tapi the maximum height is only two point eight seven, tak logic kan? So maximum height is equals to forty meters plus two point eight seven meters. You get forty two point eight seven meters. Remember, physics, two decimal places. Alright guys, any questions for this part? Part A. No questions?
No.
Alright, okay. Now let's try to do part B. Okay, so I learned part B, dia minta apa? Magnitude, right? Okay, magnitude of velocity of the ball just before it strikes the ground. Okay, alright now. Guys, see this properly. Magnitude of the velocity just before it strikes the ground. Maksudnya, final velocity selalunya kosong kan? But they already make it very clear. Sebab final velocity kosong, sebab the ball stops already. Apa lagi movement you nak? Definitely kosong, right? Tapi over here clearly stated, before it strikes the ground. Maksudnya ada final velocity, which literally means bola dia pergi ke sini, lepas tu pergi ke sini. Sebab apa? Dia dari top of the building. So from here, what your own vector? V x, v y. Kenapa v? Final velocity. Dia suruh cari, what is v? V x, v y, cari, resolve, lepas tu dapat v. Macam mana nak buat ni? Alright, kan kita dah buat stufa table ni? Dah buat stufa table, table ni? Now, can you do this question? I think you guys can definitely do, alright? Okay, what you need to do right now is redraw this stufa table. Okay, sebab situation adalah berbeza. Let's redraw this stufa table. X, y, s t u v a. Displacement untuk x, do you know? Okay, displacement untuk x, you do not know. Displacement untuk y, do you know? Okay, guys, listen carefully. If you guys want to use negative forty. Kenapa negative forty? Number one, height of the building is forty. Number two, displacement is a vector quantity. Bola tu moving downwards, sebab itu negative, alright? Kalau bola tu moving upwards, it's positive, alright? Kalau korang nak guna negative forty, boleh je. Tapi make sure you calculate from here to the ground. Basically the blue region. Tadi what we do is we calculate the top region. Kenapa dia bagi velocity dekat sini? Sekarang, if you wanna use forty, you can. But you have to calculate the lower region, okay? So let's say I use negative forty over here. Ball is moving downwards, negative. And ball is moving from the height of forty meter to zero meter. Sebab dia nak pergi to the ground, okay? That's why it's negative forty. Wait, let me just erase sikit here. It's negative forty, alright? Okay, time, do you know the time? No, you don't know the time. Sebab dia nak magnitude of velocity of the ball just before it strikes the ground. Okay now, initial velocity of x. Tadi kita cakap apa? Untuk movement, x component akan sama kan? Just copy back. Because the whole movement tak kisah bagaimana, ke langit, ke laut, ke u x equals to v x, okay? So you'll get here thirteen point zero meter per second, thirteen point zero meter per second. Automatically acceleration jadi apa? Kosong. Now you can see a lot of infos on your x component, but hold on a moment. Y component, your v for y component, do you know it? No, you don't, okay? You don't know dekat sini. Yes, you know, untuk ni, you tak tau your v untuk y. Alright, but don't worry, we can do it. Nak cari v y. Apa u y? Your u y will be whatever you have calculated here. Alright, seven point five. Kenapa? Itu adalah initial velocity. See over here, u y, initial velocity. Remember, walaupun dia punya soalan separate, tapi initial movement dia daripada top of the building. tapi initial movement dia daripada top of the building. It's just that we are calculating to the ground. Itu je bezul. Okay? V Y. Next, and okay, displacement Y, let me explain again dah. Tadi tu kita cari apa? Height, tapi untuk sini je kan? Then we tambah forty. Sekarang, okay. Let's talk realistically, okay? I'll use green colour. You baling dari atas building, pergi atas. Let's say tadi forty tu kan? Okay, forty sini, dah forty meter. Forty meter above the ground. Forty, lepas tu forty two. Forty two sini, datang balik forty. Kenapa? Displacement, remember, displacement ada positif, negatif. Forty, forty two. Forty two, back to forty. Forty, you turun bawah forty meter, turun dah lah. Negatif, something negatif, benda nak menurun, negatif kan? And then dalam vector kita belajar belah kiri and ke bawah, negatif. Just put negative forty. That's why it's not negative forty two. Alright guys? Okay, now, back to our calculation. Acceleration untuk Y component, as usual, negative nine point eight one meter per second square. Now, guys, what do you need to do? You need to find V Y. Okay, U Y, jangan lupa U Y, kita dah calculate tadi. Initial velocity, zero seven point five meter per second. Sorry, meter per second je. Now, you need to calculate what? V Y. Kenapa? Dia nak cari magnitude of velocity, dia nak cari V. You have the V X. You need to find V Y, so that you boleh resolve and get your V. Now, nak cari V Y macam mana? Same thing untuk sini, tengok component by component. Just look at the Y component. Sebab nak cari yang tu apa? Y component je. So, make your life simple. So what can you use? V equals to U plus eighty. V nak kena cari. U ada, A ada, T tiada. So you cannot be using that. V square equals to U square plus two A S. V square equals to U square plus two A S. V kena cari, U ada, A ada, S pun ada. So guna je lah. Don't forget to include the negative dah. Kalau tiada negatif, your answers will be wrong. You get your V Y. You get your answer. Itu V Y. Dia nak apa? Velocity. Dia nak V je. So, macam mana nak resolve? Gunanya Pythagoras theorem. V equals to V X square, kan dah ada sini? X, kenapa? Sini X component punya. Plus V Y square. V Y ada, kita calculate, square root. You get your V, your answer. Okay? Jangan lupa, you need. Alright, guys, that is one of the ways. Number two, kalau let's say ada you punya Y component, okay, I'm gonna write in purple colour. Let's say ada you punya Y component lebih daripada, let's say macam sini kan? V Y tiada, T tiada, and let's say you don't have your S, okay? Will make life difficult, right? Tadi, in the beginning, what I said, time untuk dua-dua component sama. Jadi, nak senangkan ke je, go to your X component, cari value of your time dulu. Dapat jawaban, copy paste dekat Y. And then put whatever formula and find the rest, okay? That's one of the tricks. Alright guys? For this, I would like you guys to do this question, redo this question, ambil balik soalan ni, buat. And this one, A B lah basically. Both A B. That will be number one, your first homework. Okay, now, any questions before we move on to the next example?
No.
Alright, okay. Let's move to this question. We are talking about a transport plane. A transport plane travelling this moment, okay? A transport plane travelling horizontally, okay? Please bear in mind, transport plane travelling horizontally, okay? Maksud dia, mendatar. At a constant velocity, constant velocity. Maksud dia, velocity initial sampai final is just the same. Jadi, ada the acceleration, tiada kan? Okay, now, at an altitude of three hundred meter. Altitude means the height. The plane is now at a height as trade of three hundred meters. Releases a parcel directly above point X. X dekat sini, okay? Wait, sorry. Your X is over here. The parcel is released here. Okay, so basically, parcel tu dekat dalam plane kan? Dia dirilis. So honestly speaking, kalau logic, initial velocity untuk parcel tu definitely akan jadi initial velocity untuk plane juga. That's why it's fifty meter per second. Alright? Next, it is directly above point X on level ground. Calculate the flight time of the parcel. Alright guys? So basically, you nak cari apa? Flight time. Basically, timer. As usual, let's do our stuba table. Okay. X component, Y component, S, T, U, V, A. Now, your X component, X component is basically your, here, distance. So, dia dah beri terang-terang distance dekat situ, just to list D. Alright? Follow the question. Kalau tak nak, bolehlah guna your own symbols. Alright? Now, time is the one you need to find. Automatically, automatically kiri, time, you don't know. Kanan pun, you don't know. Kenapa? Left and right, X and Y component, time adalah sama. Now, initial velocity of X. Sini ke kanan kan? X component lah. So it's fifty meter per second. The moment anything is like this. Now, rujuk balik dekat whatever we have done sebelum ni. Maximum height, V Y is kosong kan? Movement dia, is it from down, pergi atas, lepas tu bawah, atau from atas pergi bawah? Very clearly shown in the diagram, from atas pergi bawah. Therefore, automatically, your velocity of Y component due to it being the maximum height. Remember, bukan maximum height untuk flight dah, maximum height untuk parcel. Kenapa? Kenapa I say parcel punya maximum height? Sebab lepas tu, parcel tu takkan nak pergi atas lagi. Confirm jatuh. Kenapa? Gravity. So, maximum height over here automatically makes your V Y atau your component untuk velocity. Sorry, your, your U Y kosong meter per second. Final velocity untuk X, same thing, fifty meter per second. U X equals to V X. The moment U X equals to V X, acceleration kosong, meter per second square. Now, V Y, do you know what is V Y? You do not know what is V Y. Next, acceleration, negative nine point eight one meter per second square. Why? It is influenced by gravity. Now, dia nak cari apa? Dia nak cari time. You have your initial for X, final for X, acceleration for X. Tapi, you tak ada S, you tak ada T. So difficult a bit. Alright? Next, Y component, you nak guna, ada initial for X. You kena cari. Kalau nak cari V Y ni susah, tapi boleh juga cari. Unfortunately, lack of data. Acceleration untuk Y ada. Okay? Time is the one you need to find. Alright? What are we missing here? We are missing on the displacement of Y axis. Okay? X kena cari. Y, I can say is negative tiga ratus. Kenapa? Maximum height dah tiga ratus. Lepas tu dia nak turun. Turunlah tiga ratus meter to the ground. Okay? To the ground. Turun, negative tiga ratus meter given. Put it on your Y component. Kenapa? It's moving vertically. Horizontally kita tidak tahu. Jadi, ada S, ada U, ada A. Can you find what is T? I think there's a formula called S equals to U T plus one over two eighty square. That formula is good enough for you guys to do. Alright? Okay? Next. Yang ini is, this one will be your homework, okay? Next, the velocity of impact of the parcel. That is for A. Next, let's um add one more slide. For B, the velocity of impact of parcel. Okay? Tadi, dia nak magnitude. The initial question, we have seen magnitude je. Now, when they say velocity, number one, you need to find magnitude. Macam mana nak cari magnitude? Same thing, guna table yang sama. Untuk kes ni, it will be one table. But you can really copy the table, because you already have an information, which is flight time. Now, itu satu. Number two, you can copy back the table. And then, what you gotta do is basically you need to find what is velocity, final velocity. Kenapa? Velocity of impact means final velocity, sebelum dia impact ke bawah. Then you need to resolve. Resolve, cari magnitude. Macam mana? Pythagoras theorem, PT. Next, cari direction. Macam mana? Tangent, inverse, component Y untuk velocity final and over component X untuk velocity final. You will get your answer. Your answer, angle. Alright now, macam mana nak determine angle? I've stated earlier, kalau dia dekat sini kan? Dia impact dekat sini. So which means, it's always going downwards, right? Angle dia macam mana? Here, right? So when the angle is here towards X axis. I believe, and I think you guys know very well, the angle will definitely be something which is negative. Okay? Sebab we are going downwards. We are doing Y component which is downwards. X component towards the right. Downwards is negative kan? Belakangan is positive kan? Negative, positive, maintain negative. That's why the angle, your answer will get negative. Alright? Itu cari velocity for B. You guys know how to do it very well if you have understood my explanation in the previous example. Okay, next, let's have a look at C. Looking at C, what was the question? Distance from X to the point of impact. So basically, it's from X dekat sini sampai sini. Dia nak apa? Distance lah kan? Jadi, boleh tak guna table sama. I think it's very wise for you to use the same table. Kenapa? Dekat awal-awal sekali kita dah letak X component, dia punya distance, we don't know, and we denote atau represent dia dengan D. Alright? Okay? So what you can do? You can find the value of your distance. Gunanya apa-apa formula? Whatever you have found over here, right? Because we are talking about point dekat sini. Question one, we have clearly denote it as D. The other time, can you find your D? I think it's very easy for you guys to find your D. Gunanya apa-apa value dekat sini, X component sedetah, not Y component. Y component will be H atau whatever other things which is S Y. We are talking about X component. Find your D. Settle. You settle up this question. Okay? Now, any questions before we move on to the last part of this chapter? Any questions, guys? Alright, okay, there's no questions. Okay, that second question will be your second homework. Now, we are talking about free fall motion. Free fall motion lebih kurang projectile motion je. The only difference is there is no X component. Only Y component. Kenapa? When we are talking about free fall motion, free fall motion basically means, let's say ada orang kan? Sorry, skeleton people. Throws a ball vertically from up to down. Maksud dia, tiada movement macam ni. No movement like this. Only ke bawah. Dia lepaskan sesuatu barang. The moment lepaskan sesuatu barang, ada tak certain angle. No, right? Everything will be perpendicular. The moment everything is perpendicular, tiada X component. So in your stuba, you only do Y component punya table. Next, that is number one. That is free fall motion. Number two, acceleration is negative nine point eight one meter per second square. Confirm. Kenapa? Number one, affected by gravity. Number two, negative sebab ke bawah. Falling. Alright? Next, time, you can, you need to find time. Usually, you need to find time displacement. Initial velocity, okay. Remember, kalau dia bagi initial velocity, you anything, remember to resolve, sebab we are talking about U Y sahaja. Find your U Y and then put it over here. You will get your answer. Remember, free fall motion, they won't state clearly. They'll just say, usually, other words like vertically. Atau, they akan draw the diagram for you or number drawing. Or number three, they have already stated. Ah, kalau bahasa Melayu, dia lepaskan, lepaskan sesuatu objek. Atau throw something vertically downwards, atau leave something vertically downwards. Which means, you lepas je dari atas pergi bawah. Itu je movement dia. Tiada ke depan sikit ke, ke belakang sikit ke. The moment there's ke depan ke belakang sikit, confirm ada angle. Sekarang, tiada angle. Alright? That's why we are talking about Y component only. So masa buat stuba, only your Y component. Alright guys? Do you guys understand this very well?
Yes.
Okay, so now, this will be your second question homework. This will be your first question homework, and I'll give you guys a couple of additional questions after this for you guys to do as homework. And that's a wrap for chapter two. For this particular sub-topic, I'll give you guys some extra questions. So that you guys can practise and keep practising. Sebab satu soalan, as usual, I said, format bukan A, B macam ni. Format, let's say dia bagi B. So you need to know, okay, first need to find time, need to find velocity, lepas tu baru masuk to answer the question. And question macam ni, ada sepuluh markah, dua belas markah pun ada. So we don't know what kind of questions will come out, and will be very, very long questions. Alright guys, do you guys have any questions before we end this session? Alright, if that's so, I will stop recording first over here.